We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vicki, anyone wishing to address the board? All right, great. I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November 7th meeting, please.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. Motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. No conflicts of interest. Motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. And we are on to the reports of the President.
Good afternoon.
Oh, may.
President Alberti and members of the board. Great to be here with you today with Josh Hall, familiar face to all of you. And we get the opportunity to update you on our City Foundation Fund workforce grant. So as you know, we received this last year, last fall. And we're wrapping up year one. And we were excited in November to be awarded it, the $250,000 grant for a second year. So we're going to give you an update on year one and let you know a little bit about what our partnership is going to consist of for year two. All right, so just to remind you, the purpose of the City Foundation grant is providing grants to nonprofits working in innovative ways to place low-income young adults on a path toward college and career success in 10 U.S. cities that City Bank serves, including Sioux Falls. And so Southeast Tech and the CTE Academy, you know, we're strategically and intentionally collaborating to prepare our young people for sustainable careers in the city and region. And I can say that stepping into this role and kind of stepping into the grant as it was already getting started, what grants can make you do is start tracking everything that you should probably be tracking anyway. So we'll be sharing some of those stats with you today and how we are intentionally collaborating. The focus of the program, to remind you, is on 16 to 24-year-olds, from low to moderate income families or those who are at risk for completing high school or post-secondary training. And the partnership provides, you know, hands-on experience, industry-specific skilled training, and obviously the positions of the career coach and the internship coordinator. And our pathways include certificate, credential, granting course curricula, personalized career development, and advisement and work-based learning opportunities and internships.
So year one of the grant, our goal was to impact at least 1,500 youth in that age range of 16 to 24 years old. And throughout that first year, we hired a career coach, Renee Oinas, whom you guys met at our last report when we talked about this, as well as an internship coordinator, Mitch Lynch. And both of those two are based out of the CTE Academy. Renee actually is in our building about one day a week and spends time at all of our facilities, all the main high schools, at New Tech High, as well as the Axtel Park Building, and then at Southeast Tech, taking kids back and forth and really connecting them with the opportunities that are available. When we look at a breakdown of those numbers, the 1,500, we had a goal of 150 internships for last year. And we cruised past that, and we ended up at about 220. I think that's a number that you guys had heard in the past when we talked about that in other reports. The pre-apprenticeship program started in partnership with the AGC last year during the summer, and we had 10 students, and that was based out of Southeast Tech. And 10 students who started that, and all 10 completed that program, which is very impressive. You know, you get students who are new to the field, and honestly, we expected some to decide it wasn't for them. But all 10 of them completed, and many of them still with the companies that did the apprenticeship today. The career exploration events, career fairs, and we met with our industry committees and talked to them about what can we do, what do you need us to do? One of the big things is we want access to parents. We need to talk to them about the opportunities that are out there in our fields. We need to dispel some of the rumors that are out there relating to our industries. And we need to talk about how much money you can make by going into these fields. And so we developed career fairs at the CTE Academy. We started those two years ago. And this last fall, when we did one here in October, we had over 1,000 people attend, 348 of our students in attendance, but over 1,000 total in attendance. Now, we invited community members, we invited younger students, because one of our goals was to try to hook them in as elementary students or middle school students, hopefully getting them to come out when they get to high school, as well as getting parents in to talk to some of these industry partners who had set up a table in the hallway. We had 40 industry partners set up tables in the hallway. We had all the tech schools represented, except for, I don't think, from Rapid City, Western Dakota wasn't there, but the other three were there, in addition to the four-year institutions that were gentle institutions, as well as a couple of private institutions from Sioux Falls here. So a great turnout in the fall. Last spring, when we did it, we had about six, between 600 and 700 in attendance, 270 students, and we'll do it again here in February. We'll have another open house, and again, we'll send out the call to all of our families and invite them to come out and hopefully gain some more interest there and inform parents about the opportunities that are available in town, as well as up the hill from us at Southeast Technical Institute. Industry tours, we sent more than 300 students out to industry tours in the Sioux Falls area, which for a lot of them, it was their first exposure to some of the industries that we have in town, and a great experience. That was another thing that our industry partners asked for, is just get them out here, and we'll do the rest. And we can show them around and show them what opportunities are available. And then campus visits. We took students, again, from all of our high schools, all over the area, to different campuses, four-year and two-year, both. Over 800 of them, in fact, visited campuses in our area. So a lot of them, students who I don't think would have otherwise had the opportunity to go visit somewhere. And so just exposing them, again, to the opportunities that are out there, and then talking about, you know, what does this mean then if you go this direction and earn this degree, and then what opportunities are in the Sioux Falls area? You know, a lot of this comes back to keeping our kids local. You know, we have a lot of talented individuals, and it'd be great to see them stay around here, or if they leave for school, come back eventually, raise their families, and become employed in our community.
Yeah, and the year one results for Southeast Tech. So Georgina Cavan is one of our business instructors, and she's a trained bring-your-a-game instructor and does training down at CTE for those students. And so she trained 53 students last year, and overall, 110 of high school students received that bring-your-a-game training. You've heard a lot about our aspire-to-tech initiatives already this year, so we will continue to incorporate the work of Jenny Keys and her staff into this program. And then that tracking that I've been talking about, you know, as you start, as I start visiting with instructors and other people who've been at Southeast Tech a while, the fact is that a lot has been going on, it just hasn't been documented. So we've been doing a better job of really tracking our outreach to the Sioux Falls School District. And so last year, we had 23 admissions program visits from Sioux Falls School District, two Sioux Falls School District high schools, and then we hosted 44 group visits at Southeast Tech. So that's everything from our camps, like our Green Camp, Get in the Garage Camp, Scrubs Camp, those types of activities, our sophomore career planning days that we host out on campus, obviously, our specific admissions events, campus visit days, junior visit days, and any of those group tours that come to campus. So we've had a lot of interaction. And then we also have some instructors who go out to the schools when they're requested to do so.
So as we look ahead here to year two, new set of goals, and they're bigger. You know, we're going bigger, and we're going to try to double that number of youth impacted to 3,000. I think more so focusing on that group who's out of high school, maybe the 18, 19 to 24, but then continuing to grow the group that's also in high school. So we look at the internship specifically. Again, on the K-12 side, that's one of our main focuses with this grant, is increasing the internship opportunities for students. We have 90 students enrolled this fall, so right now, 90 students enrolled, and we're anticipating around 200 more in the spring semester. So we're on pace to hit our goal. We're still finalizing those enrollments for second semester. Kids are waiting to make the final decision on what their class is going to, or their schedule's going to look like for second semester, but it looks like we'll be right on track to meet our new goal. Partnerships with organizations, again, getting kids out and connecting them with industry. A lot of what we do at the CTE Academy, at Southeast Technical Institute, is in partnership with businesses and our community members. So again, increasing those partnerships and exposing students to those opportunities. When we think about other things that we'll also be tracking and hoping to grow involvement in is, again, those industry visits, the post-high educational institution visits, those aren't going to go away. We're going to keep doing those, it's a new group of students, it's another opportunity to expose students to those opportunities. Industry credentialing, so that was one of the things that we also tracked this year. We had students earn credentialing in CPR, EMT, as well as CNA. Next year, we're also going to be looking to add serve safe in the culinary area. As you are aware, the graduation requirements have changed, and there's an endorsement involving CTE, and part of that is an industry credentialing. You can earn it by getting that credential or taking the NCRC, which is an employability test, which we're also looking at on the K-12 side as well. And then job shadow opportunities. Junior Achievement has come forward and partnered with us in increasing those job shadow opportunities on the K-12 side. So that first step before an internship really is getting those kids out to that industry to observe, to visit, to make sure it's something that they want to invest even more time in, in the way of an internship, and eventually maybe a career. Summer camps. So last year, we offered summer camps in the area of health sciences, media and digital arts. We did a Code to the Future, a coding camp, as well as a construction camp. So we'd like to expand upon those summer camps out of the CTE Academy in partnering with Southeast Tech while doing those camps. So we'd like to grow those as well. And then the career fairs. We'll continue with those two events that we had so much success with this year, and hopefully we'll grow them even more as we move ahead.
Right, and like Josh said, year two, new group of students, you know, we'll continue much of what we have been doing. We'll expand our reach within the Sioux Falls School District, but also what the City Foundation, the City Bank, covers, which is the Sioux Falls MSA. So we'll be doing a little bit more outreach and tracking the broader MSA region as well. Continuing the aspire-to-tech, seeing how that progresses, and doing what we can to bring your A-game, we continue to do the training. Lon and his team continue to look at new apprenticeships and grow our pre-apprenticeship program. And then another thing that we added into the grant this year for our staff was specific training, to make sure that we're equipped when these students matriculate to Southeast Tech, what are their student needs, what could we look at in terms of programming to better serve them, to make sure that they're successful when they come to Southeast Tech. So some good news to share. I do have an article to pass out to you. So the Center for Promise is located in Boston, Massachusetts. They work in collaboration with the Boston University School of Education. I had to write this down so I could remember. I don't, it doesn't roll off my tongue if I don't write it down. It's the first-ever research center for America's Promise Alliance. And the mission of the center is to develop a deep knowledge and understanding about what is needed to help create conditions so that all young people in America have the opportunity to succeed in school and life. And so the City Foundation forwarded our project as an exemplary example, right, that they could include in this publication that was recently released at the beginning of December. So I'm going to give you our copy of the article that you can read. Exciting. Because I just wanted to make sure you had a copy, so that it speaks, it's, you know, great national coverage, too. And, right, it always helps to know that, right? These things are working, we just have to stick to it, and another group of students that we're connecting with.
You know, as we reflect on that first year of the grant, and we're wrapping up some of those things and collecting data to report out to the City Foundation, I think one of the things that's probably hit all of us is the increased partnerships between Southeast Tech and the CTE Academy, or on the K-12 side of Sioux Falls Public School District. That's been a lot of fun to be involved in. There are so many things that we have in common, so many partners that we have in common, and it's created a seamless pathway for a number of students. And in a minute here, we'll show you a Kellow story that was done involving one of those students, actually. When I think about other things, this welding competition, May 9th, Marmin Energy approached us, and we're going to do a welding competition for our advanced welders at the CTE Academy, but also the introductory welders at the three main high schools, the home high schools. So they're going to spend half their day doing a welding competition out at CTE, and the other half of the day, we'll bus them out to Marmin, and Marmin's going to feed them, and they'll do a written test, and then take a tour of their facility. Southeast Tech has graciously come forward, and they're going to give a full ride scholarship to the winner of that competition.
Wow.
And so one of our students is going to earn a free education through this welding competition, which is pretty exciting, and what an impact on their future. And then Marmin, through their partners and suppliers, will also bring forward a bunch of prizes and things for the kids. And so it should be a lot of fun, but that'll happen on May 9th. As far as the Kellow story goes here, we'll get into this in a second. This is a young man named Hayden who came out to the CTE Academy in interest in networking, cybersecurity, IT, the IT world, and went through a couple of our courses, and then did an internship at Workplace IT. And from there, after graduation, enrolled at Southeast Tech while becoming an employee of Workplace IT. He worked full-time then that following summer after graduation, continues to work there part-time while attending Southeast Technical Institute. So this is kind of an example of how it should work and how, you know, it can be a success for the students that we have here.
And so just one last piece of information that I want to give you. So we have a scholarship set up, so those students who come to us from CTE receive a scholarship. So this fall, we had 10 $500 scholarship recipients, 21 $1,000 scholarship recipients. So they had taken two classes, right? One class, $1,000, two classes. And then we had eight Build Dakota recipients.
And ready for the working world, a program through the Sioux Falls School District and Southeast Tech is helping kids figure out what they want to pursue after high school. And thanks to local businesses, they're getting a lot of useful experience. Hayden Dykes has been working as an intern at Workplace IT Management for nine months. While he looks like a professional, he actually started out as a senior in high school.
It's nice, because you realize that, at least, especially here, you realize that we're all part of like a web of support. So no matter what happens, I can always count on somebody to kind of lighten the load or kind of teach me what to do.
This is the kind of lesson the school district and Southeast Tech were hoping for when they applied for a City Foundation grant. That money was used to hire a career coach and internship coordinator to make the internship program more robust.
A day-to-day experience of what that occupation is, as opposed to what they've maybe mustered up in their brain and imagined for themselves or heard from a friend, heard from a teacher, et cetera. They get to see it and see how they would fit.
While some business owners may be nervous about letting a teenager into their professional work environment, Workplace IT Management President Joe Zuger sees a lot of benefits.
They become very familiar resources to us. So they know if this is the type of job opportunity they might want to pursue when they graduate, and we certainly know what kind of employee we might have. So it's kind of an extended test drive.
And this also helps kids trying to figure out their futures outside the classroom.
It gave me like the raw knowledge, and in this place, it's kind of just helped me to hone in on like a specific aspect of it and learn where to use those tools that I learned about.
90 students are currently taking part in the internship program, but the district is expecting more than 300 by the end of the year. They're also looking for more local businesses to take part.
Before I plant corn...
Any questions that you have for us? You mentioned the summer camps. Are those specifically for high school students?
Middle school and high school. So we kind of divided them up. We tried to group kids together by age. And so some of them were for, well, graduating fifth graders, if you will, into sixth and seventh, and then we did some that were a combo of eight, nine. And then there was one that was kind of in the middle, would have been a seven, eight. And so really, it's about exposing kids sooner, you know, before high school, showing them what they have available to them out of the CTE Academy and just learning more. A lot of them had interests already coming in in those areas. And so talking about what we have, you know, as far as our building, the K-12 side, but then also opportunities at Southeast Tech related to that area as well.
My son did the coding one at, and we went to the event at carsforsale.com, I think it was, and it was a great camp. Thank you very much. But the, you know, we're only as strong as our partners with these internships, so it's, we just really need to all work hard to drum up support in the community. We've been very lucky, and Sioux Falls has been great, but tell everybody that what the great program is so we can allow these kids to have these opportunities to continue this, so.
We have had a lot of success, you're right. And so much so that you're probably hearing about some other districts around us.
Yes.
Who are kind of following suit and doing some similar things. And that's great. I mean, those are more opportunities for other kids, but it will create, you know, an environment where it'll be harder to find placements for students. So we're going to need more and more businesses to step up and partner and open their doors to the high school students.
I'm curious, from, when we look at the population of our students and the increasing diversity that we have, what kind of internships do you have available to students who maybe have other talents, like a second language or a third language? How can we help them to see those gifts, or those skills that they have as a gift to the workplace that they might work in? And have we reached out to some of those other businesses that maybe are looking for that specific skill to show them how they can use that as part of their future careers?
Sure. So as part of our internship program, you know, we have a number of interns who go out through the CTE Academy, and those are more specific to the programs that we have at the CTE Academy. Now, the Governor's Office and the Department of Labor has also come forward with career launch, and there are career advisors who are actually state employees, the Department of Labor. And those are also, those individuals are placed in our home schools, and so students have an opportunity to do internships directly through the home schools. For whatever reason, they can't come out to CTE Academy, maybe it doesn't fit in their schedule, or they don't have time to take a course and then also do an internship. And so they're able to be placed in an internship with the career advisor, the Department of Labor person. And that's more of an introductory-level thing, and that's kind of a broader range of opportunities, right? And so as those opportunities come up, or as students come in and say, hey, what about this? We'd like this opportunity, then it's up to our staff, whether it's Renee and Mitch or myself, or those individuals at those high schools, to go out in the community and find a placement. And so we're starting to see some unique placements such as those in exploring that, but certainly there's room for growth there.
Any other questions? I appreciate the increased cooperation between CTE and Southeast. Just, everybody benefits if we work together. And I just, I think the surrounding school districts imitating what we're doing, you have to take that as a compliment. What you're doing is being noticed, it's working, and, you know, there's that cooperation between the state with the Governor's Office grants, and, I mean, they're just, well, the Argus gave us credit for using the term synergy, it's out there, and it's just going to get, going to get better and better. So, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we need a, we need a motion to acknowledge the report.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. Thank you, guys, appreciate you being here.
Eric.
You bet. President Alberti, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to, we're going to go over a few topics of technology items that we've got going on campus right now. And the first one that I'm going to go over today with you is something new that we've tried this year, and it was with our support center, which is our help desk, and just trying to gauge what our customer satisfaction is and where that's at, and is there always room for improvement? So we went through that, and our goal there is always to, you know, just support our campus and support all of our customers, which is our employees and number one, our students, and with great customer service. And we didn't know how that would go, because as we always know, when people usually show up at our window, they're mad and they're struggling. So it's never an easy place to go, but we always try to, you know, instill them to, it's a place where they can come, and it's welcoming, and we want to make sure we can take care of their problems with their computers or whatever technology it is. So end of October through the middle of November, you can see the dates there, we ran that survey, we let, we put it out to both employees and students. We kept it relatively short, seven questions, you know, we're just trying to hit on the high items and then, you know, get the feedback from that to, you know, help us if there's areas where we can improve our customer service or other areas for our students and our employees, we can definitely, we look at that. And, you know, as we went through this and we looked at it, it's something we're going to do on an annual basis now, just to gauge where we're at with it. At the overall, was not knowing where the first time we did it, not knowing how that was going to go, I obviously kept a pretty close eye on it as things came through. So there were seven questions, and we also had, obviously, room for comments on that. So I'm just going to go through quickly the seven questions that we went through, and you can kind of see the results of it, with 10 being very satisfied down to one. And as we went through this, you know, I was very, very pleased with what the results were. I kind of went into it saying, if it's between 10 and seven, we're doing, we're doing pretty good. And if there's one that sticks out, obviously, we're going to concentrate on that. So, you know, thinking of the last interaction that you had with our onsite team, which would be at our support center, how satisfied with you, with the quality of the service you received from us. As you can see from there, you know, 10, nine, eight, and seven, we're in about that 90, 90%. So that was obviously a really, a really good marks on that question that we had out there. The second, our second question, just being, you know, how satisfied with the speed of the service? How long does it take you? Can we get something, you know, can we get something taken care of right at the window? We don't want to have a customer stand at the window for two hours while we're working on it, so we always have loner laptops for both our employees and our students if, for some reason, we have to take their machine in. You know, if it's virus removal, sometimes that stuff can take quite some time to do. So we always make sure, we always offer, no matter what it is, unless it's a very simple fix at the window, can we, we always offer them a loner of some sort. And sometimes the students and our employees just turn that down depending on what it is. If they're going to class and they need their laptop, they definitely take it, and we try to get them set up as quickly as they can, so they have something to work on while they're in there. So again, you know, as a speed with it, as you can see with the results, very, very positive on that question also. Knowledge and professionalism, you know, obviously, we always challenge our employees in our department to, you know, with professional development and trying to stay up on technology. As we all know, it changes daily or hourly, so it's a challenge. So we try, you know, as new things come out, you know, as we try to stay on top of that as quickly as we can. So we wanted to see, you know, how is that, do people feel that, you know, are there's problems getting solved, and what's their knowledge, and where we're at with it? So again, very, very positive on that, so that's, feels good that we try to, you know, in our budget every year, we try to make sure there's always professional development money for those employees to do that. And I pass them all within our e-bells, you know, throughout the year, to, we pass them to do, take part at least one of those, if not more, just because of, you know, the nature of the field that we're in. So diagnosing the problem and solving it, you know, we, simple question on that, were people satisfied in where we were with that? Most people's answer to that is yes, it's, if you come there, you're getting, you're getting service and where that's at. Onsite support, so with our support center, that's, we're open Monday through Friday. Mondays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, we're open 7:30 in the morning to 5:00 at night. Tuesday nights, we stay open until 6:00, just as, depending, for one, you know, if it's night classes, whatever, it gives opportunity for, you know, if those students need to come in and use us. And then we close at 4:00 on Fridays, just because of where we're at. So when we, when we talk about onsite support, those are the hours that we're there. So that's where that question is, you know, with the quality of the, our online support was very positive also. Our telephone supports, we get a lot of calls, we get walk-ups, we also get, you know, obviously a lot of people call in also, so we just wanted to measure that, you know, where we're at with that. And overall, that's pretty well. You can see, you know, there's a, you know, not applicable piece on there where, you know, as you can see, that not a lot of people, there's more people that may not use the phone side of it, where it's more of a walk-up, so we wanted to test on that also. On this last question, about two years ago, we've had a push to just, to do more after-hours support, and it was, you know, it was a challenge of how can we structure that with, you know, without employing people, you know, 24/7? And we knew that the need wasn't huge, I mean, but we've also wanted to test that waters with online classes and... with online classes, and, you know, if they're having troubles on a Sunday night, you know, at midnight trying to get in, they can't reset a password, what can we do? So we started to look at different things that were out there, and there's, you know, we, there's some other higher ed institutions that we reached out to, and there's, you know, some third-party services that you can work with that will answer if they call in, or if there's an online ticketing system, they'll at least escalate to us if we need, if we need that, or they'll, low-hanging fruit, they'll take care of that for us. So we worked with a couple of different groups with that, and we ended up going with one that's saying, when USD uses it for the same thing, but they use it for all their help desks. We didn't go down that line with it because we feel having our employees is the best, best way of doing that, but for after-hours, that's what we did. So there was some, obviously, some bumpy things right off the bat because, you know, there's a lot of things that are just unique to each school that you have to work through, so we had to get people up to speed on it and, you know, different, you know, different documentation to them. But as you can see there, you know, it's, overall, it's pretty positive. The last one again on there is not, a lot of people have used it, but we've also seen that in our monthly reports where we see, you know, how many calls have came in to our after-hours, how many are resolved. We get all those reports, and we knew that was going to be there, but we also wanted to get some feedback on that. So, you know, with that, I think overall, it's very positive. I was very happy of where that was. I did not, I had, like I said, I didn't know where it was going to be because any time you, you do a survey, it's, it's good feedback, but it's also, you know, a lot of times when they're, when they come to our window, their people are upset, or it's just, it's challenging because they, they don't want to have to deal with that. So first of all, I just, you know, our, our staff has been awesome with it. I want to thank them. They're very, I'm very, very lucky to have staff like that to work with. They're very passionate about what they do, they're very, very focused on customer service. So they, they've worked very hard, and we just, you know, some of the goals that we have within our department, you know, is just, number one, obviously, customer service, you know, communication, teamwork, and then innovation. But all that stuff works together, you know, when it comes to supporting, you know, supporting our, our customers. So very, very impressed. I was very happy with that, and a lot of that is, you know, our support center manager and our, our full-time employees at the, at the, at the help desk, and then also our, you know, we employ anywhere from five to seven student techs also that are going to school and then work for us up to 20 hours a week. So we really instill with them that they're a part of our team, and, you know, they may not be a full-time employee, but they're still representing our department on campus, and they did a really good job. And then our other staff that don't work directly at the support center that do, you know, day-to-day support, it all reflects on that whole, that whole group. So been very impressed with where we were at with that survey, and it's something we will continue to do. The second topic I wanted to touch on, where we're starting to roll out is, and we will roll this out at our monthly meeting tomorrow, is we started last year, we had all of our employees go through about a 90-minute employee, end-user security training. Phishing emails, I mean, I think we all, the world we live in, we all know where that's at. And we've just found that, you know, as you, we can continue to put, you know, email filters and firewalls, and that stuff is, is all great, but your, the weakest link is our, is our end-users. We can, we can catch emails and all that stuff, but there's still, you have to train our end-users that's in order to be able to get there. So last year, we went down that, we did a very high-level overview. We had an outside consultant here in town come in and do a presentation to all, a couple times to our employees, and just give them a baseline of what's out there, what, what are you seeing, what types of emails, how do you, how do you know what a phishing email is, how do you notice that? And it was, we had really good feedback on it. A lot of people were very happy that we went through that and the stuff that not only you can pertain at work, but also outside of work at home, you know, with your kids, it's your home, your home computers. So we did that, and then what we did with that, besides that, we partnered with, it's called KnowBefore, and there's quite a few higher ed institutions that are using this that we're going to now roll out another training with that where we've got a baseline training that we will do. It's about 40 to 60 minutes that's online that they'll go through, and then we can do monthly, they're predetermined videos already that are out there that we can continue to process with that. But also with that, we do, we did a phishing email that we went out through campus just to see a baseline on what it was. It was a UPS, and I'll show you here a little bit what email it was. And we've got a baseline of where we're at with that, and then what we want to do is do that again six months down the road after they went through this training, and hopefully the click rate on that will go down with it. But a few other things that we just, we've tried to do, and we've really been concentrating on our, our employees that have access to student data, and that's within our, gins of our ERP system. And a couple of things we did, and we continue to work with it, is just, and it's, when we do security like this, it's, it's never easy. It's usually, you're going to make people upset because it's a hurdle of some sort. Just computer lockouts, you know, if there's inactivity on a computer, I think we've knocked that down to about two minutes on those types of employees. So if they would happen to get away from their, their desk, their computer automatically locks, so somebody can't walk into their, you know, if they, a lot of people just leave that open, you know, the, the system open, which is fine, but it's just we have to really make sure we're locking computers. And then the other thing we'll be working on is two-factor authentication. And what that is, is you've probably seen that in some of your online banking, different, different websites that are out there where you may log in, and then they prompt you, they may send you a text message or a code that you need to go in, and it's another form of authentication that really truly says this is you that we're going there. So we're going to focus on that with that same group of people to start with, and then eventually continue to roll that out just because of where we're at with, on the security side of things. This next slide, and Megan, you're probably going to see your name on this one because I just, I took it from here, but Megan was one of them that actually caught it when it came through. So I was off-campus today, we, we sent this, I think I was in peer or something, she goes, a bunch of employees actually saw it come through, and it looks just like it, and within that KnowBefore system that we have, there's a bunch of different templates, and there's some really tough ones. And we tried to pick one kind of right in the middle with it, and we had three or four of them that we looked at, and we actually had, to send it out, we had to actually manually bypass our spam filter because it blocked every one of them, so that was a good thing. But then what it was, it was personalized to them, and then you can see, it said you had a, you have a, a package coming, then there's a tracking number down there. So the first thing that most people are going to do, what the heck do I have coming? And then they're going to click on the tracking number, and then what that is, is that link was actually something that actually went to another site, and it was the phishing side of it. So if you see, I don't know if I put that on you, but on the, on the link itself, what we, what we're training people to do is, if you see something that is suspicious like that, is if you take your mouse and hover over that link, you can actually see where that goes to. And then the example I'm going to show our employees tomorrow is that this one takes us out to some, I mean, bogus website, and I have another one that I just got today, it was actually a UPS one, and I'm going to use that one, and it shows, it goes out to UPS and where it's at. So there's just some simple things there, and not, and some of them are tough, but just trying to educate our employees where they're at to try to do a better job on where that's at. So we'll go through that tomorrow, and, you know, we'll show them what the click rate was, and we're going to set a goal of where we want to get to and hopefully get there. So, and then this, this one here, there's just an online end-user security training that we're going to have people do between, we'll probably roll that out here once classes end this, this week, and then give them through the rest of December into the end of January to complete that. And then each month, we'll do a simple three to four-minute simple video that they'll go through on training, and then we'll, we'll try to do the, we'll try and do another one and hope that, that happens. So our next steps with this is just monthly online training that we're going to kind of do. The external email messages that you see up there, so we're, after tomorrow, once we roll this out, so any email that will, that originates outside of our campus, outside of our domain, we will, will set within our spam filter, it will automatically sense that, and you can see, there'll be a yellow highlighted piece of it going right across the top of the email, and it's just going to say, this email originated outside of our campus. Make sure the links that are in there, so it's a constant reminder, so if there's links within that, you're always making sure, make sure it's true, and, you know, if it's not, if you have questions, you can always make sure you're letting our department know, and we can, we can go through with that. So that'll be a good, a good thing to roll out with it, with the trainings, and then I had that, I touched on the two-factor authentication a little bit too that we, that we'll be working with. So it's never, it's an ongoing battle, and you work with your vendors, and you try to, you know, you try to put different measures in place, but you, like I said, it's, the big thing is just trying to educate the end-users as much as you can to help protect the data that's out there. And it's almost every day that you see some type of a data breach or something like that's happening, and you just, your goal is to not have that happen, and, you know, just try to continue to have that training in place for our employees. So the last thing that I have, and this will be very quick, we will be working, we've worked with, I think, with marketing and Megan's staff, and then obviously on the academic side, on Benjamin's piece of that, we, we're looking at rolling out a campus app that we'll be able to use for current students, prospective students, employees, and it'll all be driven off where they're at, you know, if they're enrolled for classes, there'll be obviously a current student, employees, prospective students, will all have different things based off of what their role is. So we will, this will be very tightly connected to our existing student portal that's already there, so we'll be able to do a lot of things. Students can go to that. They can go to the portal now off their phone, it's responsive, they can go to their classes, but if they want to go through the app, they will actually still have access to the learning management system, they can get to their classes, that way you can get to their class schedule, anything, most of the stuff they can get to on the portal, they can get through, through the app also. Few other things that we'll be adding to it, you know, just for example, we have the ability, if we want to, you know, security on campus has been obviously a big focus of President Griggs and the rest of the campus, and, you know, we can have, we can have a button within here if we want to call, if students have it on there and they need to get a hold of campus security, it's, you hit the button, it brings up the phone, you actually hit the phone message, and you can call them. So there's quite a bit of flexibility with that. It is, you know, we're going to, we're going to obviously take, we're looking in the spring semester of some sort to roll this out. We will start pretty small with it, we'll start with a pilot group just to get some feedback on it, do some testing, obviously, work with our employees, but more importantly, getting student feedback on it, what, what types of stuff that they want to see on it, and then, you know, continue to expand that out, and then hopefully by the fall kickoff or, you know, the AARs that Megan does with admissions where our new students are coming in to register, we're going to push it hard there for them to download that, download that app. So it should be, it should be another tool, and be another way of communicating with the campus community. So right now, we're just currently in the, kind of the branding stages of it with marketing and going through and getting the branding right and logos and that type of thing. So as that gets closer, I can update you again on that once that rolls out, but I think it'll be another good feature for campus. Any questions? I know I kind of went through a lot of stuff there pretty quickly, but any questions that you may have for me?
Any questions?
On the survey you did for your help desk...
Yes.
...technicians, how many responses did you get from students?
We had just under 150. So that went to all students and employees. I thought there would probably be more, but I, I don't know how you read that, is it, that means you're doing a good job or not? I guess the responses we got were good, so I think it was pretty good. We didn't, we didn't break it out by employees and students, we, we talked about that, maybe this next time we will do that, but I think at the end of the day, we were just looking for the overall results with it, and there was something we could focus in on it. So, but overall, it's just, there's nothing completely, I mean, we continue to work on the, on the off-after-hours support, and that's obviously something we'll continue to work on, but overall, there's nothing glaring that I felt this needs immediate attention. We just continue to, you know, just continue to, customer service being our number one goal, so. You bet.
Really scared to throw a survey out.
Yeah.
You never know what's going to come back, and it looks like you did a great job.
Yeah, that's good. And it's just, and I, like I said, a lot of it, I have to definitely push, you know, push that, you know, the, you know, the appreciation that to, to the employees in the department, because they, they're in there, and they're in the trenches every day and dealing with, dealing with the customers, and they're doing a great job.
All right, thank you, Eric. Motion to acknowledge the report, please.
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. And Rich Clune.
President Alberti, members of the board. Three things that are kind of positive to my appearance here today. The numbers in the presentation are relatively few, the font size is bigger than normal, and my length will be less than it normally is as well. So I'm off to a good start moving into the top one or two in presentations.
Trifecta.
What you have before you, we do this every year, we establish budget goals and timelines and walk through the processes. We begin that implementation and develop, or development and then implementation of an FY20 budget. So in our world, in higher, higher education, our budget processes, HLC has a lot of influence in what we do. When you read through the executive summary, it talks about some of the things that Higher Learning Commission articulates. You read through them, and it, it's common sense. I mean, you want to tie your budget process to your goals and your objectives, you want to make sure you're looking at your student learning and your outcomes, and you have processes in place for that. But I think it's always good to articulate, not only to you as a board that's eventually going to have the final say and approval on our budget, but also to the campus community as a whole as we work through that process. And you'll even see in your language about collaborativeness and working together and providing data, and really, been doing budgets for a long time, and the old adage is, you know, the best budget allocation is the one I receive and the other guy doesn't, and the best cut is the one that that other program has to endure and I don't. So sometimes that's a lot of the dynamics that go on in the conversations as we, as we work through that. But I think if people understand what the process is, what we're trying to work towards, and we're communicating the reasons why we do these things. As I tell President Griggs all the time, I said, you've, you have all the dollars available to you to do anything you want, you just can't do everything that you want. So it seems kind of like hyperbole, but there's really an element of truth to that. So it comes back to prioritizing your mission and goals. What are we doing? Does it support that? And how do we prioritize that way? So when you flip onto the page, this should look very similar to last year, changed a few of the dates and a few of the timelines, but the guidance coming from HLC remains unchanged. It's open for comment through January of this year, so maybe next year there'll be some revisions to it. But we're really modeling very similar to what we did in prior years. Ideally, again, we're aligning our strategic plan, we're engaging stakeholders, we're transparent in what we, what we're doing. So these are all the goals that we set forward, the guidelines that we establish. The timelines, as you flip through and you look down at those, some of these processes have already happened informally. I know the academics have already started to build from the grassroots, from their program, seeking inputs, looking for justifications for changes. That's starting to develop. I've already done some work with Jeff Kreider and the operational services side of that when we start looking at our capital improvements plan, some of those challenges that are coming forward. So some of this groundwork is already being laid as we move forward. But the timeline is laying out how we're going to go through some of the nuts and bolts of the processes, some of the information that we gather and put out, when people can kind of expect to see data, when's the opportunities for inputs, and then we'll drill down into the finer details on the campus community of when we're going to have forums that people can participate in, when we're going to have different reviews processes as we go through this. But at the end of the day, towards the end of March, we'll have our presentation with our STI council meeting. That's one of their goals in their bylaws is to accept the budget and review that to make a recommendation to you as a whole, and Ken Senson on that, on that committee, so he carries that message from that process forward. So in April, we'll be back for a tentative adoption of all the work that's going to transpire over the next three and a half, three to four months, and then we'll look for final adoption in July as we typically do. So kind of a very high-level quick overview of what we're looking to do.
Questions? Questions for Rich. All right? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to acknowledge the golden timelines, goals and timelines for the budget process?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, if not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, that motion carries. Anything else to come before the board? If not, may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.